It's broken again, he's just gonna record.
Don't even record it.
Okay.
Keep it quiet.
All right. All right, we want to open the planning board meeting of October 3rd, 2017 at 7:30. Need a motion and a second?
Motion to open the meeting.
Okay, give me a second, somebody.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Second up is the minutes of September 19th, 2017. Need a motion and a second to approve those.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Second it.
Okay. All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Unanimous. Sign offs, any sign off tonight? Miraculous, we ordered getting no sign ups.
I think you're checking.
Okay, next up is Atwood Estates, also known as SE Center Street. So it's got a real name now. Oh, I got one more thing before we do that. I got a bill. Sorry. Okay, I got a bill for Amy Bedard of 150 bucks. I need a motion and a second or not.
So motion.
Okay.
Second it.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, votes unanimous, it passes. All right, that's done. Okay, now we're going off to Atwood Estates. Okay, Phil.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
Philip Christiansen and Mike Sergi here. We did the survey engineering and we're also owners in the property. As you know, they scored you here through all of this before. We filed for a five lot subdivision. And through that process and also a land disturbance permit was what we filed for originally. And through that process, it evolved to suggestion that we do this eight lot subdivision. That's how we got to this point. So we prepared the eight lot subdivision.
Well, the land disturbance dropped to a very minimal amount.
Right.
Correct.
Right, through that process.
Through the process, yeah.
So what this represents is an eight lot subdivision on the property. The green is the areas that wouldn't be disturbed at all. It's nine and a half acres and approximately four and a half acres doesn't get disturbed. Five acres of disturbance on the site. The road is showed in gray here, the lot lines in red, the houses in this orange color. And as I said, the white area is the area that'll be cleared for development. This road is approximately 300 feet long to get into the property. And from this end of this cul-de-sac to the far end is 400 feet. So 700 feet of road. All of the lots have adequate frontage. This lot on this end and the one on the far end have frontage. Well, all four of these lots have frontage on Center Street as well as frontage on the road. The roads of the subdivision. This frontage is short, just provides access to this lot, same with this over here. These frontage is here, but these two lots are obviously far in excess of what's necessary under zoning. So all the lots compiled zoning in terms of frontage and area. What we're doing with drainage is drainage for the roadway will flow in this direction. There's an infiltration area here, small storage area down here. And then there's storage in the back at this location and this location. And as you know, we've asked for waivers with the application on road width, sidewalks, and curving. We do have curving in part of the roadway where we want to retain the water within the road so it gets in catch spaces to get to the drainage system. In others spots, we have, we're allowing the water to run off the road into swales as a low impact development design. So down the front, down through here, the water will drain off the roads to the side, follow with swales, this way up to here, this one down into this direction to get into this infiltration chamber. And we have curving along this side of the road and then right in here so we can direct water to a set of catch spaces at this location to take this water to the back. And also curving along this side so that the water that falls on the roadway here is able to get into the catch spaces we have located down here. And we've maintained the grade requirements of the rules. As far as the roadway cuts, it's fairly steep coming in. The existing grade is in green. As you can see, there's a big hill here. And maintaining minimal grades as required by the rules. We're coming in at 2%, going to about a 5% grade here, transitioning into that road on top. And the road on top, you can see, the cuts aren't nearly as substantial, but there's still some cuts. And we have a low point in the road at this location, that's where catch spaces are. And then the catch spaces on the incoming road are shown right here. All of this, all of the site distances are shown on the plan, vertical curves. And they all meet standard. Oh, so you know. The dash screen is the existing grade in the dark, so this bluish line is the proposed grade. You can see here, there's a 10 to 12 foot cut on the way in. Can't be avoided just because that's where the hill is. And we have shown on this plan the regrading that's proposed to be done for the lot development. We're also, since the start of this, we talked to Mr. Eric Halyan about realigning and regrading this street. And we have designed that and we're going to assist in this being redone by the town, which is a plan the town has had for quite a while. That'll get rid of that hill that's in through here. And with the realignment of the road, it'll help with the site distance.
So that's an off-site improve?
It's an off-site improve. So briefly, that's what's proposed. We have sent it to the consultant, Phil Henry. For his review, we haven't yet gotten comments back from him. When we do, we'll respond.
Okay. All right, any questions at this point by the board?
Was Phil supposed to be here tonight? No.
No, he hasn't got any comments at this point. That's the whole thing. He's given us, what, about a week or two ago to do.
Yeah, I just figured he'd be here for a presentation.
He actually did a lot of work up there to begin with when you came in with the land that started so.
Yes, he did.
Yeah, I remember that.
He should move right along, but I mean, I don't think he's got anything at this point, so. Probably maybe by the next meeting, we'll put your number.
Is that the cul-de-sac, how big is that?
I believe this is 55 foot radius on the outside edge of pavement. As we mentioned earlier, we're asking not to put the cul-de-sac.
Right, you were gonna pull it in back if after they could back up.
The road, right, the road to this point. But just eliminate or minimize the amount of impervious surface in the subdivision. But this at least gives the fire trucks, if they have to come up, this plenty of area to turn around. And this being short enough, they can back up. It's kind of like a key.
Yeah, we discussed that.
The 10 foot cut is, and I see the undisturbed area in the road end, so it's just at that wood station number?
Well.
Roughly.
Deep cuts are around 250.
And on the sides to support that, I see undisturbed area, so 10 foot.
The only undisturbed, I'm sorry. The only undisturbed area on the way in is down there.
Right.
But once you get up here, it's well disturbed. So we're down, you know, about 75.
To where the big cut is, okay.
The big cuts are up here.
Okay, oh, okay, so that's gonna feather out, okay.
That upside down.
Okay, so that'll feather out when it widens.
Yes.
Okay. And how many cubic yards or square feet did we figure that wasn't gonna be disturbed in this? Some enormous number?
Square feet or what were you asking?
What was the undisturbed area now that we went with this?
The undisturbed area is about four and a half acres. That's what's in there.
Okay. So about half.
Yes, slightly less.
All right, any more comments from the board at this point?
This is both well and septic, correct? Or is it city water?
It's town water.
Okay.
And septic.
And septic.
Should have mentioned that yet. I do have the septic location shown. We did a total of 22 test pits. They're originally done for the five lot subdivision. All 22 is, keep showing the same thing, just sand for 10, 12 feet. And the perk test are all less than two minutes of inch. But we don't specifically have tests at these locations in present. It's just consistent throughout the site.
Sure.
And they were witnessed by the board, huh?
Okay.
I will need a list of the waivers requested citing that section of the.
It's on the cover sheets.
Okay. Let me, if you want, I'll go get some plans if anybody wants to look at them now.
Do you have any hydrants?
Okay.
Yes, hydrant.
Throw it out.
Yes, there's a hydrant down there and here. We have this right here.
Okay.
And then, you know, a long time ago, the water sewer was talking about stubbing through coming across that section, but it's pretty far down the line, isn't it?
What was that?
Sewer.
Yes, sewers.
Sewer's had a question down here for that place.
Yeah, it was, that was a long, you know, that was one of their plans to cut across and come into that area. Is that?
Someone, who that plan?
The town water sewer.
Oh, the water sewer.
Yeah. They were gonna cut across and get into that area off of Center Street, a little further down.
But the people didn't want it.
Right, so how close is that?
They took a survey. Did they want to pay for it?
They were gonna bring it up to Harvard Dartmouth, yeah, that area. And for some reason, they voted no, they didn't want it. So, I mean, it's, that's not gonna bring it up. I mean, it's gonna have to be something else that happens in the area that's gonna bring it up here. I know Chesterton wants it.
Yeah, they could do it.
Yeah, yeah, we know that. So, I mean, it's, I mean, it's something the town is gonna have to think about at some point in time because that's marginal out there at this point. They've hired a lot of additional people and everything.
What's the cost to just stub that in case something comes in in 10 years?
The road?
Yeah.
Well.
Is that easy to do up there?
No, you'd be putting in, you'd probably spend about $70 a foot anyway through the pipe and extra space.
Yeah.
More, more. 125, 123.
125, yeah, you gotta stub it out to the rocks and stuff. And 700 feet of road, so 125, you know.
Okay.
Hundred grand.
You don't even know where the grade is once you get out to the road either. Could be higher or lower, so you'd be in trouble.
Should definitely be lower.
You gotta have something out there if you don't. I mean, you could be at a wrong angle at that point and it just won't work.
Yeah, then you have to go to the lift station.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yep.
Want to open up to the public, Jim?
Yeah, that's what I'm at. Any more by the planning board? Okay, we're gonna open up to the public at this point for comments. Phil, go ahead.
In the reconstruction of the road, the movement of the road, is the road obviously must be going lower?
Yes.
And how much fall would it go?
I think it's about two and a half feet probably at the high point. And it would be shifted towards this side.
The arch project side?
Yes, from really this area right here, it's coming over probably 15, 20 feet. The road is really skewed way off to that side, it's coming this way. Down here, the existing road is almost on this property. It's very hard against it. But we held this, because this is a bad part of the road, as you know.
So I would like to say thank you, number one, for leaving the buffer in the way you did and you took into consideration for the business of the act, that's definitely out. And number two, I like the design a lot better the way you got it with the cul-de-sac. I think it's gonna be less impact on us as well. Thank you for that. And just to keep in mind, Bob knows I have a septic system that's in front of that building of mine there. I don't think it'll be narrowed if you're shifting it to that side of the road, so I think we'll be clear.
I'll have to thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Yep. I just want to know the distance between the cleared property to my debt property line.
Can you just state your name for the record? Okay.
You down here?
Yeah, I'm the second one from the left.
Right here.
That's the right.
Next. What we got here? This is 120 feet.
Anybody else?
Any other, any other comments from any of butters? Any, anybody else? Okay.
Motion to continue.
In the comments.
We'll be back when we get Phil Henry's comments.
So what's, what do you want to continue to?
That's what we gotta talk about because I'm off the last two weeks, you know, the 14th to the 28th. So we were normally gonna meet on the 17th. And you can do that if you want to.
I can't make the 17th.
The, you can't make the 17th? Okay, so that's two down out of five. The other thing is that the 7th of November is election day, so we're not supposed to hold meetings. So what we, what I'm gonna propose is I'm back at least on the 29th, so if we wanna do the 31st, which is a Tuesday, is that all right with anybody, everybody?
Halloween?
Is it off?
It's Halloween.
We can do another.
The 31st is Halloween, I mean.
Can you?
Could we do another day?
You wanna do another day?
We can do another day. I mean, that's fine, but they, you know, if you wanna go.
I don't, no, it doesn't have to be Tuesday, does it, or does that?
No, no, I'm just asking, you know.
No, what day, what day are you looking at?
No, I don't care, I just didn't know if someone.
Okay, looking at the calendar here. Yeah, Tuesday's 31st.
What's yours?
I mean, does it have to be that week or jump to the next week? Or is that what you're just talking about?
The week after is election day.
But you could do it.
Well, we could do it, we could do it the first or the second.
Yeah.
I'm not back.
Yeah, he's out four weeks.
I mean, you don't need me.
The second?
But when I fall out, that's a problem. You don't, you don't want anybody to fall out.
It's Halloween that.
Yeah, could we do Wednesday, November 1st?
I might get an open house. So I would go Wednesday, Thursday the 2nd?
I won't be here, but you can actually, I'm in New York that weekend for a wedding.
So then you're Monday the 6th or Wednesday the 8th?
With the 2nd. Who else?
If you can do the 2nd, then the four of you are here, that's fine.
Okay, is, he, I don't want him to fall off, that's the problem, okay? So what you have to do is you have to allow him to continue to sit while we go on. You have to agree to that. I have to get that in writing.
Who's that gonna be?
What do you mean, I won't be here, no, I won't be here on the 2nd.
Are you gonna be here?
On the 2nd?
Yeah.
He'll be here, I won't be here.
You won, okay.
How many votes we need, three?
Well, you need three, but what, what happens is because of conflict sometimes, you know, some people may not be here. I don't want people falling off, is what I'm trying to say. We have a full complement, five people finally. But it doesn't take much, as long as you don't mind somebody missing a meeting. If they miss two, they're definitely out.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's set it up.
So Thursday.
I just need something.
We have that two month stretch already between meetings.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
Yeah, no, just go the 2nd.
So we're gonna do November 2nd, Wednesday, okay?
Motion to continue to November 2nd.
Okay, all right.
Must be all going vacation with you.
I'm going down to Florida to see what's left. Resorts already been down four weeks. So there's been no vegetation as usual, so.
I don't need the receipt, I don't know if you need to keep it.
All right, we need a second to meet forward to November 2nd, okay? I need a second, you're on that?
I'll second.
Okay.
I won't be here, but I'll second, maybe you guys will.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Just, just give me, you know, a little letter next time, show. That's all I worry about, okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
You're taking your time.
Okay. Okay. Boom, boom. Okay, Nichols Village has canceled.
Okay. Did they say why?
Yeah, they're not ready. They haven't even advertised yet, so I mean, at this point, it's gonna take a while with them. Billis Way has also canceled. He's on his third adjusted set of plans at this point. I mean, I'd say Peter's catching everything, I'm catching things. You know, I think the lawyer's going up the wall.
Is that gonna be a problem? Is that gonna be a problem that I can't make that meeting to sign it? Can I sign it after the fact? If that's gonna be our next meeting when they're in.
We could vote for you to sign it out of meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's that on the?
Billis Way, if, if they finally get a new Mylar.
What about the memorandum, is that? I mean, that's gotta be.
I haven't got that yet either because that's been changing, you know, so.
Well, the first thing is we vote the memorandum and then the plan notes.
I mean, it should be a month. They should be able to pull everything together by then.
Peter has put a lot of time in on this. I've put some time in on it. And.
Oh, it's okay.
It's a lot going on, that's all I can tell you behind the scenes.
Okay.
Yeah, just if, if it comes to that, just vote and I'll sign it after the.
Yeah, we do that all the time, if necessary.
Okay, let me just, let me just make some notes here. Okay, what I wanna, yeah, we'll do Homestead next. And all we're, all we're doing is, you had said that some lot up there off of Francis Street needed some trees, okay? So I brought the plans with me.
Okay. Yeah, what we were referencing was that item in the memorandum that the board has the right to put shade trees, buffer trees wherever it deems necessary, which is in the memorandums, just standard lingo.
You're saying more than Francis, correct?
Between Francis and Homestead on the left-hand side, but not in the right of way of where that pipe is.
No, I'm just gonna show you that. Here's Francis. Here's two lots, these are two lots.
Right.
They're not in the subdivision.
It's here.
Okay. This is the sewer. This is the sewer.
Right, so can't put it there.
No, you can't.
So the, this area here and either side.
This thing right here has five trees. Five trees back there.
Right, but you're standing here looking that way. That's completely open.
Well, you mean, it said, me and O'Hanley went up there and dumped the trees. And I invite the board to take a ride up there.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause I went up there earlier in the year, so it'd be nice to see that stuff settle.
From Homestead at this point that lives in one of those houses? Nobody. Okay.
Okay, so move that to take a site walk, we'll put it on the next meeting, report back.
Well, I invite other members to go up there, just take a ride up and take a look and see what you see. I didn't see the need to it. Hey, I invited Bob O'Hanley, who was a former board member, to take a ride up there and take a look at us. Didn't see the need for it either.
Okay.
Okay.
Did any of y'all check out on my lot up?
Not since the last time I was out there, 'cause I wanted to see those purple boundary lines that they were gonna put in. Are those in?
We put them in. I definitely wanted to test the one you put up against by the fence of the house directly behind me because I know that fence is a lot closer than 30 feet. But there was no wooden stake there, so he just kinda just stuck it next to the guy's fence.
Wow, there's gotta be a pin there, is what I'm asking. There's gotta be a pin if it's the back line, we'll find it.
Well, he, he put, he put V bar markers.
Yeah.
Up there, but the fellow that lives there pulled the stake out so he could move his fence back. There's no, there was no wooden stake.
Well, it's still a back, okay.
Put the flag on it, left there.
They were supposed to mark the back property line, so we'll find it.
So you just put the V bar marker right up against the fence back, which I know is closer than 30 feet.
All right, we'll, we'll find it. 'Cause we want to make sure it's okay.
It's easy to find.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we've got our own engineer up there reviewing the whole thing right now, so I mean.
Yes, who's doing that one? What are you doing there? Oh, so that'll be.
Well, we go by what our engineer tells us.
Right.
Okay.
So I know where my property marker is. And I have a team, that's all.
All right, so it's that one.
And we were talking about putting some trees up back there as well.
Yeah, the memorandum is clear, and it's always been this way for 20 years. Sometimes after the construction and things go in, you see the houses, you can't see that in the spring, so we just put standard lingo that if we gotta put a few buffer trees in in there, we do it. And that's what, that's what we do, we're on the final phase of this thing, we get that done and.
Because I can tell you from my yard prior to the construction, you couldn't see past the top of the hill.
Yeah, well, we'll find out, I'm sure, because they did, you know, they had it cleared for the construction, so.
Right, but they cleared well within 30 feet as well as tree stake.
We're gonna, that's why those stakes are in, I wanna go measure those myself.
Well, you saw yourself that they were cutting down trees, that's why I apologized.
Yeah. No, I, I saw, I saw a lot of things out there, so I wanna see, now that everything's done, 'cause last time I was out there, everything was still in flux. I wanna see how it stabilized and then what, you know, if we have to pop a few here and there, that's what the memorandum's for and that's what it says. And I don't anticipate a forest back there, but I, I'm sure there's a few holes that need to get plugged. And then, and we'll same, we'll take a look and see what happened over on, on the Francis side, so. That's it. But, okay, so we'll put that up for next, Jim. And then, what's up? Sunset.
Yeah, sunset.
Yes, what are we doing with that?
Are you gonna notify us when you go to the site walk?
I don't know who else, and we're not going up as a board, so it'll be individual.
Or anybody.
Yeah.
That wants to let us know.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna go up there when I can get a window in the schedule.
Okay, you have my number, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'd appreciate it if you just let us know so I can point out a couple of things to you and then we don't have to come back and keep doing this.
Well, we're gonna keep coming back, we gotta bring it in before the meeting anyway. But I wanna go out and look, so, okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Jim, what are we doing with sunset?
Well.
Have you heard anything, Tom?
I didn't know, were they supposed to show up tonight?
Not tonight.
No, we were just discussing that thing.
Why weren't they on the agenda?
We're just talking about everything that's going on.
Tony, has he been in touch with you, the owner, at all?
Tony, has he been in touch with you, the owner, at all?
No.
Okay.
So, the I thought it was on the agenda, so I thought they were coming.
Did you discuss anything with them after the meeting?
No, never seen anyone.
No, I thought you discussed, you went out there. I didn't know if you.
Nothing.
Okay.
So, what's gonna happen is when they do decide to come, are they gonna notify you in advance?
To the board? Before the board? Yes.
So that I will know in advance that they're gonna be here.
They're supposed, isn't Woody?
Otherwise, if I'm not.
Woody working with them too on that one?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so Woody's gonna know too. Has anybody talked to him?
No, I mean, we haven't heard back from him as yet.
Well, if they haven't even talked to Tony.
I thought you had an agreement with him, you were gonna meet separately, each, you, you had agreement with him before you left, last meeting. That you and him were gonna sit down and go over what you wanted on your property.
He told me he was gonna come up with a proposal.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Okay.
He didn't indicate whether he was gonna show that to his first and then to you or what?
No, you, you, you and him were gonna sit down and talk about it and go over it and get.
Okay, but he's gonna come up with a proposal.
So, he hasn't, he hasn't contacted you?
No.
That's all we're asking.
Okay.
Okay.
So you're saying when he contacts me then, that he'll have a proposal?
Well, we're gonna have to, we'll, we'll send something to him.
Right.
I don't wanna be the only one agreeing to it.
Well, we get Woody. Woody's going out and look, so let, I think the way we left it was, Woody was gonna go through his stuff, find out what it was, and we'll, you know, we gotta figure out if there's anything else going on up there.
You don't wanna be agreeing to something without you people being involved, right?
No, we gotta get our engineer.
Well, that's, that's, that's what's caused the problem, okay? And, because something got signed, and that's where they went, all right?
I understand that.
And we don't have a copy of what got signed.
But he's right. Walter's right, though. We'll get that, let the review engineer look at everything.
Well, that's where we have to go from.
And then maybe by that time, he'll be in touch with us.
Okay.
And you.
All right. But if he talks to me, I don't wanna agree to anything unless you people agree with it too.
Right.
Because if I agree to something, then you people say, no, no, we can't do that.
We're trying to get to the point where you agree with what they wanna do, and that, and that's what will change everything. We'll, we'll go in and we'll modify what we've already done at this point. But right now, I mean, some, some of the things, you know, your thing with your wife signing this and all that, that's a legal issue, it's not our issue, it's your issue, okay? That, you wanna get a lawyer and take it to court, you could, okay, but we're not involved in that stuff.
Okay, but my point is, when you sign a document of that type, should it state what's gonna happen?
Yeah, there was supposed to be a, there was supposed to be a plan with that. That was one of the things that.
There was nothing like that on that document.
That's right.
I mean, you asked, you asked for a variance without indicating what you're gonna do. What does that mean? You can do anything you want?
No, there was supposed to be another plan that went with that.
I can't, I can't comment on it, because we don't have a copy of it, Tony.
Yeah, that's what we asked, that's what we asked them for. We asked them for a copy of the variance plan, 'cause it references it in the minutes. And it says it's supposed to be a plan going with it. The engineer says that they were gonna change it, and, and that's what we're all missing, so.
What he, what he described to me, the engineer, when I met him one day there, he's telling me he's coming down right to the end of my property, way down the end.
Different, different engineer. We're talking about our review engineer that was looking at that, and then Scott was doing something out there too. But anyway, so, um, I, I think, uh, I think we hit that one pretty good, so Woody do his thing, and then we'll get, get a meeting going. If you hear from him, you can let the board know.
I'll, I'll let, I'll let him know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, well, one, one thing I'd like to have happen is that everybody shows up together at one meeting. You and Wallace. Boom.
Yeah.
It's done, because I don't wanna hear another thing, oh no, I didn't agree to that, or they're just going ahead and doing something. I don't wanna hear that.
The only problem that I see with that, they make a proposal at that point, if I don't agree with it, what happens?
Well, we gotta give you advance notice or something, so you have time to think about it. We have to get our engineer to look at it, see if there's a structural change that's gonna happen, so we, we don't even really know. So, let's, let's get where we're going.
I think what really has to happen, Tony, is if they give you something in writing, we'd like to get a copy of it, okay? And if you start disagreeing with it, then I need a letter from you telling us what you disagree with. It goes to them, but it CCs to us.
Okay.
So we know where everything's going at that point, all right? I don't, I don't wanna have to think things. That's what's been going on for too long now, okay?
I think it has to be a common pitch at this point, if it requires any changes to the plan or, or a quick, a quick mod, as you pointed out.
Let me ask you a question. You're holding some money, basically, right?
Yes.
Okay, based on that, can we say that if we don't agree with his plan, can we do what we wanna do? With that money?
We'd have, we'd have to talk to legal counsel and point out that.
I think you'd have an argument with that.
If there was really something that was.
Depends on what they're offering you.
What they're offering, I mean, and, and what they're not offering. I mean, Bob O'Hanley, when I was talking to him again today, I mean, I think he came up with a pretty good idea. At the bottom of the banking.
Yeah.
If you simply took cinder blocks, I mean, you know, concrete blocks.
Yeah.
Okay, you put one in the ground and two on top of it, and then you put a fence in front of it on your land, you won't see the banking, and they could then fill some more of the banking, reseed it and everything, put some more of those thatch things.
And make it, in other words, the, the angle would be a lot less at that point, right?
The angle of the banking?
Yeah.
It'd probably be more of, it would probably, what you have is, you have part of it where it comes out about twelve feet, is more like that. But when you go further back, it goes like this.
Yeah.
As it goes down.
You had a partial retain.
There's less of it, there's less, but there's two trees at the end of that banking. That just don't have a lot of land in back of them, okay? I mean, those roots are kinda, could probably come out. So, I think they need to add a little dirt in there, so to speak.
Yeah.
But what that pitches, that's not gonna be a three-to-one. If you put a three-to-one on it, it's gonna come into your yard.
Yeah, I don't want it.
Well, that's, that was the whole retaining wall.
The modi, the modification would be, okay, if you put three of those blocks up and you go thirty, forty feet down, okay?
Well, that's.
That's gonna, that's gonna hold back any moisture for the most part, not all.
That's, that's the reference wall in the minutes that was originally there that O'Hanley said.
It would be a low-cost wall, Wally, because those.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Those are about three dollars a block, I believe, something like that.
That, but that, that was what was originally proposed, was a gigantic on one side.
Yeah.
And a retaining wall all the way down, and that's the wall O'Hanley mentions, that they're no longer gonna do that, and we came up with a two-foot dress wall, but that's a, something a little different, um, you get, you know, just gotta prepare that, I suppose.
Yeah, I mean, the, the whole, the whole point is.
How deep you gotta go for that?
I, I've read what you, what you said. I don't think you wanna look at the banking. So if there's a fence there that you're looking at.
Right.
You're happy with the fence. The banking is still there in back of it.
Right.
But if we put blocks up, block it up about, it, it would be two feet above ground, one foot in-ground, two feet above ground.
Sixteen inches or so.
Sixteen down with a, with a rock, with a rock foundation.
Uh, stone, stone base.
Well, not completely, but enough, because we want vegetation to grow on it. And that that vegetation you see there?
Yeah.
More of that.
Yeah, 'cause we go down eighteen for frost, so.
Can we use kind of a, you know, one of those, something to do with more dressier?
Right, the dresser interlocking block.
They have, they have those, but those are about eight inches high, not a foot high, so that, you know, you're.
So we go three levels with them.
Those, those are almost four dollars a block, 'cause I have them in the back, and I, it's, when you get to that point, you're probably, just to reach a level of two feet high, you're gonna need three of those and one in the ground.
Yeah, so.
I mean, you could put a cinder block in the ground.
It's a lot cheaper than a two-foot hand-built wall, though.
Oh, I, I know that, and I mean.
So, that's a good solution.
Yeah, it would, but you wouldn't see it with a fence there. So, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking of.
Oh, you're putting a fence, oh, you're putting the wall here, then the fence here?
Yeah.
Oh.
You look at the fence.
Okay.
Which is what the wall was supposed to be there for the, for everything else.
It's why it can be cinder block.
Yeah, that, that, okay.
But let's just see what they propose, and then if it's not something that's acceptable, we can go from there.
Yeah.
And then we're.
I mean, it's, it's not a, it's not an expensive thing to go thirty, forty feet with, with that kinda block. But when you get into the prettier stuff, okay, yeah, it, it gets a little higher, that's all.
Yeah, you don't want it too ugly, but, but I, I, I'm sure they could get a, it's a pretty good idea.
I'm more, I'm more concerned, when I look at that, what goes along there, is it comes out twelve feet in one spot, and it's down to something like almost about four feet as you go along.
Yeah.
So I, I'd like to fill in a little bit of that, but I like to fill it in with some good stuff, not some bad stuff. Pick up some of the rocks that fell down out of it, and then we get 'em out of there.
Right.
That ain't the only piece that's a mess, I can tell you. If, if you walk back on lot two, I mean, they were out there this morning.
So, you're basically putting the fence on the property line?
Yes.
Okay, when you do that, from the road, there's only about two feet sticking out.
I know, I know.
Which is fine.
But when those trees.
Oh, you're looking at the trees, okay.
Those trees, those trees go twenty-five feet high. They're gonna bush out, I guarantee ya, at least six feet. They're gonna contact one another. Nobody's gonna see you.
Okay.
Nobody. And we're only gonna take it to where it is right now, because tomatoes are growing very well, they're getting that sunlight. Okay?
Hey, I had a great garden with tomatoes.
Yeah, you did. You sell them out front, you had a basket full of them.
Okay.
All right, okay. But one other thing, don't, don't bother.
If you hear from him, contact us.
If I hear from him or you people, then I know that something's up, that he's come up with an idea.
It, it is Wallace you're dealing with, not the Hulu. He just owns the three.
I know that. I know. I talked to Steve. Steve told me he had nothing to do with that, yeah.
Okay.
Just so we know, okay? And I'll just inform the board, I was up there today, nothing's been done so far.
Lucky you got Steve to hold it, just to build the houses in there.
Yeah.
I wish you had the whole thing.
Yes, I know. Well, he, well, he was smart enough not to get involved.
You know where they put the trees up, though? Can I just say this? Do you know how we put the one set of trees all over the place? Well, he put four of these trees in. Now he's got one of those trees, there's still an open area. I think for those people, they would like to see that other tree out and two more of these same trees in there, so aesthetically, it looks good to them.
That's in the memorandum too, we'll make it a.
Well, just open one, open one of those sets of plan and show us where.
Well, it shows a tree plant anyhow, so that's what. Shows a tree plant anyhow, that's what he did.
Okay, just was wondering if you had anything you wanted to add, so.
Where are you on sunset?
I'm five. I'm the closest to the back.
So you're the fire hydrant guy?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I wanna hear your input on that, 'cause to me, that, you know, to put a fire hydrant in your front lawn is absolutely ridiculous.
Yeah, it's, I mean, we don't, we don't mind it. I guess my only thing is if you guys are gonna move it, if it's on my property, I'll make sure it stays clear.
Wally, where, where are we gonna move it to?
You don't mind it.
One.
Well.
Number two.
How about if we put a granite post and you wouldn't mind that either to protect it?
Going down that driveway, it's a bias to the right.
It ain't gonna, you ain't gonna run into it.
Didn't we determine that the?
No, 'cause I, I think that's where we left it last week, was having them put something in.
Sub, subset of a post.
Just in case you did slide in the winter, or someone slides, that it's not taking out the.
Come from, that was my question.
It's coming down over the hill, that's why it's there.
Okay, so it shoots out from Dartmouth?
Yes.
And then it goes on in angles straight there? It doesn't hit the cul-de-sac first?
No.
So then the, the hydrant can go over here?
Where?
Right on the right-hand side on the Dartmouth, right where all those big open areas.
He's got, he's got trees in there now, three of them.
Yeah, but.
So you can take the, take the head of the hydrant off, cap it, leave it as a clean-out, and then come down and then put the hydrant on the Dartmouth side.
No.
Is that beyond the, is that on that little ride?
On the, on, yeah, where that big hole is, on the right side, so there's.
No, I, I.
No, I would leave it.
Why?
Well, number one, the bias down the driveway is to the right. The reason why it was put where it was put, the design for the house that originally was gonna go on that lot.
Yeah.
It was gonna be a left-hand side entrance.
Right.
To the garage.
So there wasn't gonna be anything there?
No, there wasn't gonna be anything. That's why it was done.
So now that it's, now that it's there.
Yes.
And the hydrant is in the front lawn that decides the hideous factor, okay?
Well, he just said he did, he doesn't mind it at all, and he said he didn't mind if we put a granite post there, if somebody, if the owner or.
You want one of those yellow cement posts in front of your lawn?
A granite post. A nice granite post to protect the hydrant. He said he didn't mind that at all.
If you have, if that's what you guys have to do, if you wanna move it, that's fine, I just.
Well, the, the question is, I wonder, I wonder myself, is how that got there. But we've got so many issues with structures that weren't put in, and all kinds of other things over there, this just added, you know, one more. So, to, now, I understand the whole pipe and where it cuts across. I thought it maybe hit the cul-de-sac, which would've been easier, just stick it there, because it's a circle access, but it's not. But to pull it back into that big space, which is gigantic anyway.
Oh, yeah, it's plenty.
Okay, but leave the pipe underground and just cap, 'cause they could use it as a clean-out. One, it gets rid of the, the red doggy thing in your lawn. Is it there?
The water line is here, so you could check it right there.
So it could go right in the cul-de-sac and be done?
If that is actually where it is.
So that's even easier.
You guys moving it, I just wanna figure out what you're gonna do with it, so I can figure out what I'm doing.
My suggestion.
I know, you're trying to grow lawn right now.
Yeah.
You're watering it every day.
Lot of water there. Um, my suggestion would be to pull it and put it where it's easy to put, and if it's indeed, if this is accurate, then it can go right in the cul-de-sac, and that's out of the way of everybody, there's no stone walls in there, there's nothing, that, leave the pipe underground. Okay, so you have no, no ripping that way, they just have to dig in the cul-de-sac area.
You're gonna rip up the road and?
No, you don't. You don't have to rip up the road.
No, according to this.
It's right in the middle of the.
It's running right next to the cul-de-sac.
Of a sewn cul-de-sac, yeah.
If that's accurate.
What is under the, what is under the cul-de-sack, Wally, and we discussed that last week.
What's that?
Two weeks ago, is all the chambers.
Yeah, but you got a pipe there. If you, if the chambers are down below and the pipe already is there.
All drainage chambers are on there.
Yeah, but so is the pipe. One of them's wrong.
So it's running literally right next to it, so all you have to do is hop behind it right here.
No, you still have to open up the curbing.
We have, we have asked for more thatching type.
If it's in the middle of a dirt pile.
A greenery to go in there. What we, we don't want trees going down, you know, I don't want, maybe some low bushes. You don't wanna get something that's gonna fall out.
You're right.
I have seen some stuff poking its way through.
Is that what they're doing?
Some greenery poking its way through.
Cause it's the end of the line.
That's the best thing that can really happen, but not enough right now.
No, because his tap, his tap.
That you were suggesting.
I'm sure. It didn't go, his service is over here. His service is coming off.
Right there, it is.
Right off.
He'll do some stuff, but I, I don't know what he's gonna do at this point. Yeah, I don't.
Right, your ser, your service has to be on your property, that's, and that's why that's.
I mean, it's, we want, we've got, we put that on our list to do.
I understand, but his service, yeah.
If that's what it's gonna be.
What you have to do is.
How about if we get, to solve this mystery?
Post the same way, you know what I mean? Like a eight by eight or a ten by ten, nice granite post, try to cover it.
But to me, looks pretty good.
Okay.
It'll look really pretty.
But how about?
Yeah, well, no, I, I understand, but I mean, don't put it way up either, put it, put it down. Yeah, put it down below the, you know, just, just above the hydrant and not the.
It's just a car hits that, not the hydrant, I mean, you don't have any issues.
Leave it everything alone.
Guys, if that was, how much did you pay for that house?
It doesn't matter, well, it's, Wally, what do you pay for?
No, I'm asking a question.
No, what do you pay for it, it's not our business.
No, I wanna know, was that a five-hundred thousand dollar house, thereabouts, that going in that subdivision?
That's.
Roughly, okay. So, what I'm saying is that, for a home like that, and all the issues that we've had on that, the solution to this, if we can't solve it, is get Water Sewer out there, okay, ask them where the service is, ask them where that pipe goes, see if, see if there's a place that we could relocate it in the cul-de-sack, or pull it back over to here, okay, so it's, 'cause that's wide open right over here, there's nothing there.
I think they're using it as a blow-off.
If they're, if they're using it as a blow-off, it has to be at the end, or they have to add a blow-off.
Yeah, but you have to, you have to cap it.
When they plow.
We're talking two different things, son. Okay, so if this is used as a cleanout, because we used to go with a loop system going through, then that can be capped, and it still can be accessible.
Happens every meeting.
Okay, it's just the red part is coming out of there.
I know.
Okay, so if the hydrant's over to here, um, or over here would be easier.
They use it as a blow-off.
They, they use it to clean the main, because it's the end of the main.
No, I got that, and we used to do a loop, and we used to run twenty feet to get all that out there, and this would still be accessible to clean out the main. We're not gonna eliminate it.
Have a good night, Tony.
We wouldn't eliminate it, we just cap it, so it's still accessible.
There's nothing wrong with that.
But let's, that's their bale of work. Why don't we ask Water and Sewer?
Water and Sewer's the one that had to put it there.
Well, I'm not sure that they, of a.
They reviewed the plans, they put it there.
Plan that was in place before the house was built.
Right, so now the house is built, and we gotta.
It was a right, it was.
We have a very.
It was a left-side driveway.
An aesthetically pleasing fire hydrant.
I didn't wanna know what we're gonna do.
Right, well, we don't, so.
For right now, assume it's staying.
Yes, because the question is, is that could it be moved? It looks like maybe, but we're not sure, so. And that's something we, Woody's reviewing this, too, let's have him review that ad build, see where that goes, come up with a solution.
Finished hot top.
Hot top, sidewalks.
Curving, his service is off the end.
Wait a minute, Bob, why does any of that have to change by removing a head? I don't understand. Nothing else would change, the service would be there.
How you gonna, where you gonna put the hydrant?
The hyd, that's what we were looking at, over here, on the right-hand side.
Yeah, but if you're putting the hydrant here, then you're trunching across.
You're gonna have to dig the hot top, dig the curbing.
If the pipe is there, we'd dig, dig right into the soil.
No, but there is no pipe, according to this, there's no pipe.
No.
Where does this come from?
No, it won't.
They won't.
Where did the ski come up?
I don't know why.
They tapped into the main, no, wait, wait.
Are you the one that complained? You didn't complain.
You didn't complain at all. You would've, you would've, you would've put it in here.
Exactly where it is out there.
According to that asphalt, they tapped on sale.
So he just watched on TV, that's, yeah. He just wants to know what's gonna hap-. He wants to grow his grass and make it nice, that's all he wants, so.
In that hill, I don't know.
Bob, did this come up from Murray? What's the pipeline coming up from Murray that caused that whole swath to begin with, our Dartmouth station?
It's an eight-inch pipe coming up.
So it comes from here?
From Dartmouth, yeah.
From Dartmouth. So, where it comes up here, still in the soil, not near any curving, not near any hot top, and this whole thing, if there's a pipe that comes up here, if it's an eight-inch main, and just tee into that, put the hydrant there, cap that one that's there, nothing changes, all you're doing is removing the head, so nobody knocks it over, okay? It's still there for a cleanout?
No, you can't use it as a cleanout now.
Why?
If you cap the head, you can't, you, you need the hydrant for, yes, a blow-off.
A hydrant is controlled blow-off.
You just can't cap a hydrant.
Well, you can and just.
You can.
Well, you're right, but then, but you can't use it.
It'd have to be a valve, so I, I get what you're saying, so let's just.
And his service is tapped right by that hydrant, too, so he's gonna be at the end getting all the crap coming in. That's why that hydrant is there now, so they can blow it.
Is that hydrant a dead end, or does it continue like we do, we normally throw a few more feet of pipe for, for?
Dead end.
So that's a dead end on that one completely? So they didn't even put a, a run-through?
No, that's what we're doing at the, no, there's a tee up further that goes down the Dartmouth.
Okay, well.
That's what they're doing at the subdivisions, they're using the hydrant as a blow-off. You know, and that makes sense to clean the line out.
Clean out the lines.
Yeah, we used to go like twenty feet beyond and just have the sediment building there, but I guess that's a kind of change.
No, he's been.
So why don't we just sum this up, that to, to have Water and Sewer, let's write them a notes, have them review it with Woody. If you can move it, move it, if you can't, you can't, but at least we'll get an answer.
I'm not gonna agree to that, I'm out of that, you guys can decide.
Okay.
I'm saying no.
Well, I, I would like to get an answer, not just.
I'll talk to Water and Sewer, but if they just give me a look, or they give me a no, that's it. I'm not taking it any further.
How you gonna get Wallace, you think Wallace is gonna, oh, we'll put the hydrant.
Wallace won't pay for it.
Wallace has got enough issues on his own, and I hope he's watching, okay, so.
Oh, yeah.
You know, there's so many things missing out here anyway.
He's down in New Nubber Falls watching it.
So, hey, guys, did you forget that we're the board that's in charge of this, and it's not the other way around, we're not, you know, the tail does not wag the dog? So, if this is built with so many other issues, with so many other problems, let's correct them.
There's so many other issues that are more important than this hydrant.
Well.
I don't think the hydrant's important at all.
You don't, you don't live there.
No, and he doesn't mind it either, he lives there.
He just said he doesn't mind it, it's.
What is, is your wife okay with that?
This was you being obstinate about this.
Yes.
It's getting crazy.
Every subdivision.
Jeez.
The only thing I can tell you is, you get a thing from your insurance company, okay, and they wanna know how far you are from the hydrant.
Your insurance will go down.
It's in my living room, twenty, twenty, thirty feet from your front door.
Exactly.
All right, so let's, Jim, you take it up with Water and Sewer, see what they say.
Okay.
Okay, and we'll see where that goes from there.
Can you guys, can someone just let me know if they're gonna move it?
Sure.
Oh, you would.
Oh, we would let you know when.
Yeah, we're not.
Absolutely.
That'd be awesome.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
I'm not going to do it personally until you.
Okay.
All right, last on the agenda, last time we talked about the changes to the subdivision rules and regs, I'd say go home and look at them, okay?
Yeah.
I wouldn't, we didn't vote on it or anything, but for me to hold a hearing, I have to have a vote to go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to go ahead with the proposed changes to the subdivision rules and regulations at a public hearing.
Are we voting on which items to, to put up?
Well, we'll take them one at a time, if you'd like.
No, I mean, I think the only thing I had objection to was the.
The first one, but I still think, what if we just put all four before the public and see how the public weighs in? 'Cause this isn't a vote to accept them, it's to have a public hearing.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the hearing, I'm not sure if the, usually we don't get anybody on these. So, I was just, again, just to reiterate, my, my contention would be just leave, leave this as it is, and have the, um, have the waiver requests come in on it, on a case-by-case basis, wouldn't change everything else to, I have no issues with the other items.
The only thing I, I will say is that most subdivisions today are going eight ounce. If they go nine, they face triggering, because of the price they're now selling at, and the price of an affordable home in the greater Lawrence, Haverhill, Newburyport, you know, throw in Boxford, Georgetown, and maybe Crowe, Lynn, and Rowley, and a few in between, we don't even count anymore, and, and literally, it's, if you hit nine, they do run the risk, okay, 'cause I do those calculations, I finally figured out how to do it, uh, they could go from eighty thousand dollars to one hundred and sixty thousand, okay? The second thing is, they hit ten, they have to donate a house for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, but what's that gonna do to the sidewalk, that's been in play for a long time.
But the second thing that I have seen repeatedly in just about every one of these subdivisions is there ain't no damn need for two sidewalks, no matter what. The other thing is, we're rebuilding ninety-seven right now, and there's one sidewalk. One thirteen, when that got rebuilt, one sidewalk, those are state roads.
But what happens if you're on the side, for instance, like, we're, we're on, for instance, ninety-seven, if there was a subdivision going in, like Federal Way, if, let's say, that was a subdivision, you have the sidewalk on that side, so you would loop it in and out, that's, that's my concern on that, 'cause you don't know which one of these is gonna pop out.
There, there's, there's other, the other thing is, it is a cost of the town at some point in time to rebuild that sidewalk.
I, I agree with your, with your logic wholeheartedly, my only concern is, since we're talking about a change to the sub-reg, leave that the way it is, have them come in and have the board review each subdivision case by case, 'cause we can always waive it, but once you change the rulebook, okay, there's no sense for a waiver, and it's gonna be happening all the time, so, and we can't predict the future. Bob might get a partial sidewalk on Center Street where that new subdivision's going in right now, okay, on, when they kick the road over, I don't know. Who knows what King Street's gonna look like in, in fifteen, twenty years? So, there could be a possibility where this may come up, so why waive the reg? They can easily ask for a waiver, which we've been granting, the other items on this list are, I have no issues with them on that. That was my only concern with that, but why change the reg, just leave it and have them vote for a waiver?
You do the same waivers all the time.
Right, but it's, but what, what happens if it's, you change the reg, and now there's a place where you could actually have a sub, a sidewalk on both sides? Then we're gonna ask for something that's not in the reg, so, that's why that was, this was put into the regulation because of the need for sidewalks in the town through the master plan survey that went out, that everybody screamed, and there wasn't enough sidewalks, and being a father of three kids and, and using them, uh, I like the five-foot's better than the three-foot's, but we do use them. And Bobby knows that I go out with my snow blower and clear the sidewalks, so.
But you only have sidewalk on one side.
Yeah, but I go all the way down Evergreen, though.
There's only sidewalk on one side, Matt.
I have no sidewalk.
What?
I have no sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah, most of the town doesn't.
I have no sidewalk.
Pheasant Lane is, um, Pheasant Lane has the sidewalk on the street.
I think we should.
You got gravel road.
No, it was a five-foot, we increased the road length.
Now I can, I got hot top.
So that was put in there, and then everybody parked in it. That was an experiment.
I like to go to one side.
All right.
That's where we took.
King Street doesn't even have Bertha's sidewalk.
That's right, King Street is a variable length right away, but Pheasant Lane was one of the two experiments that we did, and widened out the road to include the sidewalk in, it was a pedestrian bike lane.
The only way you could do it is.
I don't even.
I already got, I already got one street light.
And we did stripe it, we just striped it, and people parked in it, there was even a sign up there.
That said, don't park.
That said, don't park pedestrian bike lane.
And they still walking the street.
And Bobby said, hey, that way I don't need a sidewalk plow, and so what happened was people parked in it, and then they didn't know.
Especially on a cul-de-sac.
Matter of fact, we still had two thousand dollars in that account to paint that line again.
Sunset, they're gonna walk.
But the residents didn't know they had, that's what that was.
Sunset.
You know, you're not gonna change that.
Yeah.
Flavor of the board at this point, do we, do I, I'll go for a vote on all four to begin with.
I like one sidewalk.
Okay, so I'll, I'll go for, I'll go for everything, okay, so I need, I need a vote on it to accept all four to go forward to a public hearing, okay? All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You said aye?
One, no.
Okay, so it's four.
Not for all four, for all, for the other three, absolutely, but I, I really think we should leave, I'll say it again, okay? Leave this out as the regulation states right now, there's no need to put that in as a mandatory sidewalk on one side in case. They can always ask for a waiver, and we will grant it, once you change the reg.
And we grant it, so why would we keep it as a reg?
Right, but if we take it out of the reg, and there is a subdivision which could have two, then they're gonna say it's not in the reg, we're not putting two.
But we can do the reverse, too, if they want another way, but we could say, okay, we'll give you that, but put another sidewalk on both sides.
See, but this is, we're actually changing an existing reg here, this is actually a modification on the other two, and that's my only difference, and we fought like hell to get that in there.
I'm just, I don't, I'd rather have no sidewalks on these, some of these cul-de-sacs.
Spoken from the road commissioner, they're paying the neck for him. I agree with.
I'd rather have none.
All right, four or three, I'll, I'll change my, I'll change my decision, okay, all in favor of four, raise your hand.
All four?
Changing all four.
Oh, changing all four.
Changing all four that I've got.
Oh.
Okay, four, four to one again.
I think that's only.
Okay.
When's the last time we had an eleven-house subdivision?
Oh, we've had, we had twenty-seven.
No, but when's the last time we had?
Oh, you're not gonna see them.
Within ten.
No, that's what I mean.
You're not, you're not gonna see them.
I don't think there's space for them.
There's a few spots.
Besides the lots that we want now.
You're just not, because they would have to cough up, in the case of that twenty-seven, they'd have to cough up almost three houses.
Really?
Yeah, and no one's gonna do it, they're gonna build, they have to build the same type of house in there, they can't build a real small crappy house.
Do they flag the particular houses?
Hmm?